That's, I believe we're going to open today's town hall forum. The forum is going to be something like this that I first turned to Andy to ask him to do his reflections on the outcome of the May 19th election. We're looking at his reading of what happened in Sacramento issues. Second, then, I would like to talk through what we think that the university's budget office are the implications of the May 19th election for Stona State University. And then wrap up my comments with the timeframe and schedule of how things might unfold over the summer. And then open so it's more for observations, questions, comments. So with that introduction, I have Artur to join shortly, and I think Derek may be coming as well. Other members of the panel may have observations as well. But to start off, Andy, can we turn to you for your reflections on the events of the election?
Thanks, Larry. Well, obviously, everybody knows the outcome. The outcome is that there will be somewhere between about $4 million and $6 million less to close the campus. And that's predicated on the notion that I don't know if anybody except the governor and the four so-called leaders of the legislature who believe that the lottery was $1 million worth $5 million. So I knew the lottery wouldn't say this $5 million probably wasn't true. So even had CD and he passed, the hit would have been bigger than $15.6 billion. Most everybody said, anyway, it is now somewhere that they were $21 million. But I did want to share one observation of something that, there was a press conference at 10:30 this morning in Sacramento led by the opponents of proposition one A and some of the other groups that were looking at some exit polling data. And we have exit polling data. And the exit polling data may have some small amount of potential goodness for us. And that is, as you know, that the no-tax folks are saying that that's what the election on Tuesday was about, is that nobody wants to want to raise taxes, everyone wants to cut programs. The exit data shows absolutely the opposite, that overwhelmingly the no-on one A through one B was about anger at the legislature for not doing its job. Okay? That it was their job to come up with a budget, it was not the voters' job. And also, obviously, confusion, et cetera. But one of the, and there was a whole series of questions asked, you know, given the choice, will you cut these programs or if you'd be willing to look at additional revenues? And on all of them, everyone without exception, people would be willing to look at additional revenues, and of course, the devil's in the detail. But the one I wanted to particularly highlight was higher education. And it was about a little better than three to one. People support higher, and they support no further cuts to higher education, even if it means that there has to be a tax increase. Okay? Now, this is important, of course, because the Democratic leadership of the Assembly, the Senate Lord Bass and Senator Steinberg are saying, oh, those voters have spoken, or they've spoken about it all kinds. Okay? We, the people who had the press conference this morning gave them a heads up, saying that I'm not watching this because that's not what the data is supposed to. So that means that, you know, that the assumption that this is, they have definitely just got our marching orders to cut everything is not what the voters of California apparently said. Secondarily, of course, if you've been following this, is that there's going to be a modification in the new budget plan. Normally, the so-called Big Five get together in a secret room for a while and hammer out some kind of deal. And two things, is they've increased the number of people in the room to include a couple of additional members of the legislature, including the chair of the Senate Budget Committee, who is Norrie Adams, our Assemblywoman. But more importantly, they have also said that this has to be done publicly. They can't do any more of these secret deals because that's another thing they believe that one of the reasons the voters voted no is they not only don't do their job, but they do it in secret. Okay? Transparency means, as we all know, when you go to a public meeting, you've been a well orchestrated public meeting, once you open it up, there can be a new idea. So that means that those people who do support public programs like public higher education may have some additional power to try and get the legislature to look at what the people really want and to look at alternatives also. That's not saying that, geez, everything is, you know, better. But things are better. Okay? So that gives us a small amount of hope. And simultaneously, if you look at the LAO's report, which Larry and I was going to go over our share, the Legislative Analyst Office had a meeting, had a press conference today too, where they released the May 21st overview of the 209-10 main revision. Remember, the governor leaped one early to try and scare us into supporting the governor, and it didn't work. But this is a further clarification of this, and it has some really horrible things from CSU as proposed. But simultaneously, the real budget numbers that the legislature is going to work off of, in other words, the governor's response to the main revision, okay, will be out on the 28th. So what the governor sent out on the 10th is probably going to look a lot like, but not absolutely identical. I bring this up not to undercut Larry's numbers, which may be 100% accurate, but they may be some tweaking involved because we don't have a clear picture of what the governor is going to say in more detail, right? Clearly, what he did on the 10th was a propaganda form, right? And it was, it was not well presented, et cetera, et cetera. Though it was the base, clearly the base of what the LAO was going to do. But the process is, Legislative Analyst Office looks at the money that came in as expected versus what they put out a proposal. The so-called main revise is actually a response to that, and that will be out on the 28th. So that's what's, you know, what is going on. The election had a clear outcome, but the clear meaning of it is still unfolding. And I think it presents some opportunity for those people who haven't completely given up and say, we're just going to be killed, and there's nothing we can do about it. We're probably going to get clobbered, but there may be something we can do about it. But as you all know, anything can be done about it, it's probably going to have to be done campus and public. So we, again, the chancellor sent out his memo last week about the election, there was one part that we definitely agree with, and that is that the CSU and the CFA and all other interested or qualified units are willing to work very, very hard to get the budget numbers back in. That's my answer.
Well, following from Andy's point, the CSU was given a number by the governor's office earlier last week, like last week, and then just after the referendum, after the election underdog, we were able to have a conference call with CSU officials to take us through the number in the system. Yes, we're hearing this number of $410 million thrown around with the CSU's statewide reduction. But we've tried, the budget office, Janice and I, to sit through and understand what that means for Stona State University. And that's what I'd like to take you through here. But I want to echo Andy's comments, based on what the governor is saying today, and we fully anticipate the governor to say perhaps something different. How different will be is not clear on May 28th. So this is kind of what we're hearing on the official channel from the governor today, it could be different. But we start with some things that we know. The Board of, since we all worked together in our last town hall, the Board of Trustees, and there may be, last week or so, it did vote to increase the state university fee by 10%. So we can estimate for sure that 2061 will come to state potential degrees. And I think, I don't know if it was on the sheet last time we talked, but we are now projecting our university interest earnings from our student e-revenue, which we now invest locally, and we're anticipating about $120,000 in revenue from that particular part source. We are required under CSU policy to step aside a third of that July 461 from financial rates, and that's why the first reduction rate of $54,000 comes into play. We know that we're going to be assessed by the CSU for mandatory costs, mostly associated with employee benefits, but some little bit for energy here in space. So we know that, based on our projections, the Chancellor's office will lose $816,000. We're estimating at this time, although Belinda will give us the final figure when she knows it, that faculty salary increase for PPR year two will be about $200,000. I think the actual estimate is about $203,000. So we're in the ballpark for that. So that will go out into faculty salaries. Craig Dawson, I saw maybe Craig a little bit earlier, Craig is estimating our utility bill, even after the allocation that we received for the Chancellor's office for new space, to be out of whack by about $200,000. So we're estimating that if the utility has the general fund portion. Faculty development, year three is part of the president's initiative to move us toward the $1 million faculty development base over a five-year period, so we have that, and that's not good. The diversity initiatives, Patterson Town Hall, we used to call that the CCGS, I changed the name to diversity because it's broader than simply CCGS, so that's the 325. And at the last PBAC discussion meeting, we had a discussion about the GIS laboratory and the desire to fund that permanently with $120,000. The final number, $8,534,300, is the combination of the various reductions that we've been talking about in the spring semester, along with the impact of what the governor announced would have with the propositions fail. So it used to be different types of numbers, especially session reduction, and then our share of the $50 million reduction. For simplicity, now we're doing, which is one reduction. And it's a whopping $8,534,300, as we know it today. And so when we net that all out, it ends at $8,648, is the situation that the campus would be facing if nothing changes over the next weeks. Then, just for, people always like to plan how that would go out, if we were to do it on a program basis, you can see that it goes out to the divisions and the way that it's displayed there. And then on the bottom of the page, we still have our non-general fund budget challenges that we're starting through. There's some changes in those numbers, so I'd like to make sure folks know what they are. The foundation endowment distribution number has not changed, although I believe that number is going to go down. Because I started a conversation with each of the owners of the endowed funds, use those endowed funds to find out just how much they absolutely need to have in order to keep those programs functioning. So once we complete that, that analysis, meeting here with Dean Reviole, Dean Butler, Dean Raimi, others who have endowed funds, it could very well be that while the $1,168 would be because of our state, we could get by with some number that's different than that, perhaps lower. So once we know what that is, that we're changing by the next time we're together. The athletic scholarship number has fallen from $400,000 to $200,000. And that's not because the $400,000 has gone, has gone away, but our coaches have come forward with the commitment to raise 200 of the 400. So we're still trying to find 200 more to make our athletic scholarship program whole. And the extended education bridge funding of $500,000 is still a challenge. So that's the financial picture that we are currently facing here on May 21. What will happen that will make things a little bit more clear are the following things. As Andy mentioned, Governor Schwartz, and every regular revision of the budget on May 28th. We'll see what that says, and as soon as we know that information, we'll put that out through Susan's help to the campus community so that we all understand what the main revision did, and if it will really be a change to that $8,534, up or down, one way or other, depending on what they do on June. The next big significant time in the nineties on June 1st, Chancellor Reed has summoned all the 23 presidents to Long Beach to talk about what the May 28th thing is. So there will be discussion with the chancellor and the presidents about what the chancellor is proposing to do with whatever number is coming forward on the 28th. After that happens, Chancellor Reed committed to the Board of Trustees that later than June 10th, he will issue some sort of plan for the CSU. My sense is that between June 1 and June 10th, he's going to undertake various consultations with various groups, statewide academic senate presidents, others in the system. And on June 10th, he will issue some sort of plan for this issue. For our campus, then, we're proposing, the steering committee of these town halls, that we do a town hall meeting on June 18th. We originally thought we made to do it on June 11th, but we're a little bit fearful that what we might have from the chancellor on 10th, we might not have time to adjust it or analyze what it means. So we're pushing that to the 18th. So there will be a town hall in this room on the 18th of June. So what we plan to do is videotape that meeting, and then it will be on the internet, probably the next day, Susan, would have to be case, to get it up there. But for anyone who is here on campus that would like to come by phone, that would be fine. But if you're unable to be here and interested to see, you'll be able to watch that by going to the homepage and so forth. There's a second town hall forum that we're going to schedule for July 30th, because by June 18th, we will probably have some sense of what the CSU is going to be doing. The state and the CSU is going to be saying to Stona State University, and then the various vice presidents and their consigliere bodies will go into hightear to work through whatever that means. So by July 30th, we probably will have some sense of what Stona State University will be responding. And so we'll do a second town hall meeting on that day. There'll be President Budget Advisory Committees on both of those days as well, PBAC, Artur and I can co-share that committee meeting with the PBAC next week on Thursday, and we'll be asking the PBAC if they would be willing to have back for two special meetings in the summer, one on the 18th of June and one on the 30th of July. And if we need more meetings, we'll try to schedule more meetings as may be the case. And I do think it's also the president's intention, intent to have ongoing conversation, Susan, as you will be chair at that point, with the Senate Executive Committee. So it may be the case that Don Correia will wish to bring the Senate Executive Committee into session over the summer to have discussion there. And it wouldn't surprise me that he might want to do the same thing with the Associated Students, although that might be a bit of a challenge. So we'll have to figure out how to do that if this two bodies are not all present. But the intent is that it will probably be some very difficult decisions, no matter what the numbers are. As Andy mentioned, we feel like we're going to get clobbered, it's just how much of a clobber is it going to be? But whatever it will be is probably going to require us as an academic university community to make some very difficult and quick decisions. And there needs to be as much consultation and discussion about that as possible. But that's kind of the timeframe that we're envisioning. Let's see. The media, before we open to questions, let me see if there's any comments or other observations that any member of the panel would wish to make before we even see what folks might have on their minds.
Larry, just one, just one question I wanted to make. For those of in the political compares that have been involved in planning for the earlier cuts that we have been anticipating in the 09-10 year, this, this, these new figures are global, so they encompass the earlier, the earlier cuts. And so just to get some perspective, the $5 million debt would hit our division.
We had been planning for about $1.5 million of those $5 million. So $3.5 million would be if the full amount comes in. Some of you may wonder if there were any questions on credit expense, will there be another student key increase? I'm not sure that would be very much on the minds of the students. When you look at the challenges facing this kind of numbers, there are really some big, three big operating principles to keep in mind. One is something Andyuded to, a reduction of this amount of cut due sometime revenue of this date. That would be one option that might come to pass. That's a very important part of our budget. Second, growing and important part of our budget is the revenue side, and that's the state university fee. So the trustees do have the power to raise the state university fee beyond the 10% that they have. Will they do that or not? Is that clear? We'll probably get some indication, but that might be a chancellor's plan, but we'll have to see.
This is, the Legislative Analyst Office is proposing a 5% increase.
Beyond 10?
And, yes, an additional, and the debt of that will be, because picking out the account rate would be an increase, would provide $37.5 million additional dollars for 09-10.
So following Andy's comment, that you can go to the white sheet, and you could, say, okay, if 5% came, we would get $1.2 million worth of new revenue approximately, because it would be 10, it would be 5, and then we'd set aside about $400,000 of that. So you can see what the impact might be then on the bottom line, should that happen. So you have revenue, you have tax appropriation, and then you have operating expenses. And our operating expenses break down approximately on the campus, 80% people, 20% operating expense. And that's how our thing runs. When I'm throwing people there, I'm not referring to the cost of not only the salary, but the cost of the compensation with it. So when you factor those two things in, it's about that split of the operating expenses, substantial portion of the operating expenses in the area of utilities and financial aid, which are pretty much driven by external factors. So you can begin to see where the university has its flexibilities and where you have your big revenue expense items in order to begin to figure out how to manage through. I guess the most desired outcome would be the lobbying and to somehow take away this reduction or minimize it, that would be the, is probably the thing that we, as educators, would probably push for the most. Steering tuition is a sensitive issue because of its connection to access of the state of conduct, or issues of operating costs are difficult. Chancellor Reed has said there are two operating principles that's going to guide his thinking. And they are students first and to save as many jobs as possible. That is his comment to the Board of Trustees, what they were getting at last week. That's open. Alicia, if you'd be willing to help with the microphone, let's see if her questions, Catherine.
Oh, sorry. Thanks, Larry. I'm curious about the impact of the federal stimulus money on all of this.
Yeah, that's all in here, Catherine. We factored into these numbers, the $8,500, the impact of the federal stimulus money. It's a complicated story that I'm not sure I could fully explain. Well, Janice and I, or Jessica and I are in the process of trying to develop a piece that we can put out that explains how the federal money comes in, because the governor takes away a pile of money and then he replaces it with his federal money. And it's quite complicated, but it is, it's been netted out of these figures. But it's hard to explain because they go back to 2007, '08, and we're trying to put a sheet that, you know, a regular person could understand easily, and not necessarily need to do. We will, absolutely. And I imagine that we'll probably maybe make, I'm looking to Susan to see if this is possible, a link right on the homepage that will allow people to go into where we have this stuff. So it'll be easy for people to get to over the summer. Other questions?
There is one additional piece of information, and it is, and there is, what I read about the 5% fee increases of the Legislative Analyst Office report today, but there's a, you can, there is a link that's to the Legislative Analyst Office in the May 10 revision that has a quick paragraph to explain that, in fact, what they're talking about is current year only will $1 billion of the reductions, of which, that's to the UC and the CSU, that's theoretically going to be entirely backfilled, the stimulus package, $510 million, which is the $510 million you may have seen bandied around in the press. That's the cuts that the governor's making, that are being proposed to be completely backbuilt by the stimulus package. The $410 million that Larry's talking about is over, but I mean, that's, I hope I have it a little simplified to the point that I got it in anchor, but that's essentially the way I understand it.
That's my understanding, Andy, as well.
And a further complicated thing, if you want more complicated, there is some, there is a maintenance of effort requirement for the stimulus package, that the feds give the states the money for the stimulus package, but they have to at least maintain some attempt to find funding within the state as well. And the governor, as I understand it, went back to the Department of Education on that portion of stimulus packages for education, and said that they had miscalculated. And so this Department of Education at the national level, they said they wanted to envision a miscalculation, which apparently allows the governor to take deeper cuts and still not have to trigger the lack of maintenance of effort. Okay, that's just one of the complications. Apparently, that's taken in on this May 10th information and the May 21st information. So it seemed to be a great manipulation on his part because it not only allowed him to cut additional funding to higher education, but also allowed him to cut additional funding to K-12. And he claims it was having to do with the way the community colleges were counted. I'm using this primarily as example of why it is difficult to have really clear answers and so forth.
Couple other points that, if you read the governor's item that came out before the election, you'll notice in there, if you read it carefully, that it might, there are two things that are disconcerting about the CSU reductions. The first one is that the governor targets our reduction in the area of outreach. And Chancellor Reed is very opposed to that particular targeted reduction, because outreach is very important to CSU's diversity efforts. And so the chancellor is committed to work with the administration to make that targeted reduction for outreach, unallocated reduction. So that's one thing that's in there that might be a concern. Hopefully, Chancellor Reed will be successful in taking that, how we, the reduction might not go away, but at least it would not be targeted to that one particular area, which would really have a big effect on our EOP program and any of our other outreach efforts. The second thing is, you study it, you'll see that the CSU is being treated more harshly than the University of California, which, if I remember correctly, about $50 million, I think is the number exactly, right? And we feel, all of us in CSU, that that's not right. And Reed has promised to work aggressively to try to get that part fixed, but if it's successful or not, it's not clear. But the CSU, we asked questions, those of us who were being briefed on this, probably this had happened, and the answer was, there was, in the speed of trying to put together these two scenarios before the election, that the Department of Finance made an oversight, and CSU, at least, are supposed to be identical, but we may hurt there. So there are two things to pay attention to that could help, at least that could benefit for us. Some of you are wondering, usually I'm trying to anticipate some of the questions. Will President Armagnana make a hard hiring freeze now? We discussed that this morning in the cabinet, and the president's still urging each of the divisions to be very, very retrospective and careful in their decisions about hiring particularly permanent employees, but he's still allowing each of the vice presidents to make that decision. Substantial changes in the fall course schedule, I don't think, Art, do you want to comment on that? I know that might be a concern to the students, will that, does that be anticipated at this point?
Well, yeah, we talked about that with the, and we are, we don't plan to substantially reduce the fall schedule. We're still mounting a fall schedule with the original target in March. This means that if we do have to shrink in terms of enrollment as part of the response to these cuts, that it will come entirely in the spring. So it makes the, whatever changes it might be, it's going to be more dramatic, but it does at least not pull the write-off from one of the students who have already enrolled on the fall.
There is another factor, thank you, Art, there's another factor that I forgot to mention, and you'll hear about it, you've already heard about it, and you might mention, and you'll hear about it, you've already heard about it, and you might want to know what its implication is. The board of trustees also approved that there be a rather substantial increase in the tuition or the fees that we charge for students enrolled in the MBA program. So that number is not appearing on this piece of paper, that you have the white piece of paper, because what we'll do with that is that that money is generated, it will go directly to the school business neck and all. There is some kind of provision that the board of trustees couldn't know that when you raise the fee for the MBA program, you can take up to twenty-five percent of it for financial aid. So whatever we decide, or however that is decided, we'll take that part of the fee away for financial aid. But it's not showing here as general money because it will go directly from, as we collected, to a part allocated to the CSU's area. That's how that would go, because it's a restricted fund, but you'll hear that perhaps in the discussions, because it's an action item, and it will show in our budget book. So I wanted to, I forgot to mention, Jen Birch. And then Bert.
And Gordo, about the, the whole, the plan to reduce, to not reduce the fall schedule, will that translate around into same classes, same number of sections, same faculty, same release times, you know, point of time, same number of sections, the same size of rooms, not an increase in students per class, will that sort of thing?
The key is that we're not anticipating cutting classes that have already been scheduled and that already have students enrolled. So, you know, that's, that's basically it. And in terms of assigned time, that's not so clear. We have to wait for that, for the budget, for the, you know, details. And I understand why you're asking that if we reduce assigned time, then personally that would reduce the need for lecturers to replace the faculty in the classroom that have been, that have given assigned time. So that might be part of the mix. All I can assure people at this time is that we are going to continue to operate with the current target for our fall schedule. And, you know, we'll see about spring once we get the numbers.
Bert? I think we should talk a little bit about this pink sheet that came around a few minutes ago. I understand this was prepared by the academic senate's budget committee. They did study, it's the nine smallest CSU campuses from Stanislaus with sixty-six-hundred headcount to Chico, which is almost sixteen thousand. It's almost in the middle of the pack. But it appears from this that we are way oversupplied with administrators. One hundred and eighty-one at Sonoma, which is even higher than Chico, almost twice their size, and the highest by far on the list. And some graphs on the backside completely show that Sonoma State is an outlier with respect to these nine smallest campuses. So it seems to me that as far as our campus-wide budget problems are concerned, we've got an obvious way to solve the problem. We just need the president to amend his policy that the only people who are subject to firing for all practical purposes are, or non-rehiring, I believe is the phrase, are the adjunct faculty.
You might be slightly, can I make a quick point? I just want to clarify that the report that you're citing was not produced by the Senate Budget Committee, it was a report given to the Senate Budget Committee by an outside source. I think it's important, well, clearly, all aspects of the university's budget have to be analyzed. And one of the things that we pay close attention to is, not so, at least I do, not so much the number of administrators, but I look at the percentage of the campus budget that's being spent on the category of institutional support. Because institutional support is generally speaking where you had your overhead in your administration, whether that be academic administration or non-academic administration. So that's a really good measure to look at, and we do that in the audit of financial statements annually. And we would like to make certain that this issue, this Sonoma State University is not out of line in the area of institutional support dollars, has a very large tendency to the other fault of the small campuses. So that's why I would urge people to take a look at audited numbers, which we look at in the expenditure plan every year, and it's relatively easy to calculate with, calculate it by looking at the audited numbers. But I do think, Rick, you raise a good point, I think, since the large number of those administrators have, that there are fourteen, since the administration and finance division tends to have the larger number of administrators, we're taking a very careful look at how we administer a university and ways to reduce those costs. The other thing I'd like to point out to everyone, that Sonoma State University is fairly unique, along with only the San Francisco campus to do their grants and contracts program within the university. And because our grants and contracts program is in the university, a large number of the people who are associated with those grants and contracts are classified as an MPP. So whether they're a true blue administrator or not, that's debatable, but they are typically involved in some sort of research which is privately funded. So those factors could be brought in to the analysis, whoever did that, that might give a more accurate picture of what's going on.
I'd like to comment on the impetus question because Larry's right, if one hundred and eighty-one people are MPPs, it's about, I believe that about thirty of them are out of the general fund, which leaves us at about a hundred and fifty, which is the equivalent number of general fund MPPs at Sonoma State. So we are heavy on MPPs. Another way of analyzing it is full-time equivalent students per manager. And the system-wide average of full-time equivalent students per manager is, there's a manager for about every hundred or two students, and Sonoma State, that's about forty-nine. So whereas I do think these numbers, and the other thing, these are the small, these are not the smallest nine campuses, the very tiny campuses have higher numbers because they're Channel Islands and Monterey Bay. But if you use that number, we are, we do have higher, but maybe not quite as high as this. So even with the meeting, we do have a higher MPP number than the system-wide average, just looking at general fund MPPs. I would also point out, getting legislative analysts report is something you should all read because it's got incredibly bad news proposals from them. Remember, the legislative analysts are not friendly to the higher education in California, never have been. And number two is they have no idea what we do. But one of the proposals they do have is, among other things, increasing, phasing out all professional graduate programs support. So that would put all professional graduate programs in the same situation as the MPA, but not until, that wouldn't get any savings until a year from now. And they do, they are talking about increasing the average faculty teaching load, one course per year. So the largest hit in their proposal of how to come up, this is three hundred million dollars, not four hundred and ten, so I'm not sure what that difference is. By far and away, the largest hit would come off of faculty, even with their proposal. But they do talk about reduce non-instructional staff here by five percent through higher fees as proposed. So they are proposing, but again, the chancellor listens to the part of the LAO report that he wants to, and ignores all the rest. And so how do you, that plays out? It is worth noting that, getting back to Susan's question, if the LAO's report becomes the way of doing it is, yeah, it would not eliminate access, it would increase class sizes again by five percent, and it would increase the number of courses that the average load would constitute at the same point, so it would be by massive workload increase, which is probably something that would help be negotiated.
Other questions? I think so was Susan, and Tim.
Well, I think it's important to remember that these are draconian cuts, no matter what form they take, and we need to be kind to one another here at the university community. And I hope that as much transparency in these deliberations as is possible will keep everybody informed as they proceed. At Sac State, there's a lot of talk right now, I talked to a colleague there last week, about a campus closing, one of the smaller campuses. So it sounds like the chancellor's office hasn't yet decided on exactly what, how they're going to find their economies. But I would hope that through shared governance and full discussion that we can achieve a cut or reduction on this campus that's both equitable and does the least harm to students taking classes and people's jobs. And to that end, I have encouraged students and all of us to try to cut our utility costs, cut what we can, even if it's small and it's incremental, it's going to help in the long run. So I think we need to think about creative responses to this too.
To Susan's point on the utilities, I have, I'm in the process of working with Christopher Denault to develop, and probably Susan's office to develop some public information materials that will remind us of ways that we can lower energy costs, the signs in the restroom, the signs here and there, that help us keep that in mind. Georgia Schwartz, you know, Georgia's here, sent me a slew of ideas in the area of energy conservation that are very helpful. We'll work on that over the next weeks to have those. Kim, did you have a comment?
Sure. I wanted to say that I share the chancellor's sentiment, students first. I tend to be rather short-sighted about these things, and I encourage you to be short-sighted about them too. But I acknowledge that there's a danger to that too, because everything that's not getting a class for a student, in certain senses right now, seems to be kind of superfluous, everything, including just because we're faculty, say, faculty travel or faculty release time or other things that might be brought up. It seems to be that getting the students their classes seems to be, needs to be our highest priority, more than administration, more than anything. But the problem with that kind of thinking, and why people with longer-term perspective need to balance that conversation, is that anything we do to get the job done more cheaply, the state of California will say, congratulations, thanks for doing it more cheaply. So we are in a catch-22 in terms of the publicity aspect of that, and our communication to external audiences. But that being said, each of you in the room either sits on consultation committees or has representation that sits on the consultation committees. And I do encourage you to think about what it means to be student first, and what kind of voices you want to be heard at those meetings, as what I think are going to be very drastic if cuts are made to this campus by the end of next six months, the internal decisions about how we're going to deal with this. I don't think Perot is going to come out and give us their classes, and so if we just have to take the cuts across the board, I don't think that's going to serve the students well enough. We're going, unless we also cut access, quality is going to suffer tremendously in about a while, but if we cut access, if we reduce the number of students who attend the university either over the next year or two, while keeping our same-day budget, we may be able to at least preserve some semblance of quality in our academic programs. But if we don't reduce the number of students, and we just take these cuts proportionally, the academic programs will not survive. And this is just a rough guess that I see from the numbers over the years. So I don't think Perot is going to cut it, and I think we need to be very proactive in giving consultation to the president through those consultative bodies about what to do and about this best of the Roman.
Alicia, there was a spare comment back there.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, can I come forward to this as far as I can go?
Sure. I can probably speak loudly enough for everybody to hear me.
This is for the tape. Thank you. I understand that the chancellor's office has been running scenarios for staff layoffs for some time now, based on seniority points as a baseline. And I'm wondering if either of these two dates, the June eighteen or the seven thirty, if there were going to be staff layoffs, if those would be announced at those two meetings, and if there's an opportunity for union leadership or other leaders on campus to work with HR to talk about possibilities of, you know, across the board, minimal cuts in advance of some layoff notice?
What happens in this area is that the whole procedure we have, as anyone knows, nine current department agreements with nine different organizations, and each of those contracts specify the university's responsibilities with respect to these types of actions that Lain has mentioned. I believe, I'm actually convinced, sure, that this issue will do its utmost to follow the letter of those contracts in terms of notification and other sorts of actions that are all specified in. They're different depending on the nature of the contract, and see if they has one set of regulations and principles that guide us to CSUE, you get another Supa, a third one, the APC, something different, and so forth and so on. So that would be done by the CSU, I would believe, and I think they would follow the contracts specifically.
If I can add one thing, and not specifically APC or U4, but U3. In the past, there has been informal discussions between, at least the California Faculty Association and the chancellor's office about ways to compensate and deal with this informal, for example, and the last time we had a really big budget crunch, I believe it was 2005, one of the agreements were that members of the faculty early retirement program could take a leave of absence within the retirement program. And for those faculty who understand FERPA, for those who don't, basically FERPA is you retire, but then you continue to work at half-time for up to five years. The contract says, if in time during that five years, you take time off, you can't come back. But in 2005, we reached an agreement so that FERPs could take a year leave of absence and get their year back, to, you know, to take care of one-year problem. The California Faculty Association has approached the chancellor's office, not, I can't say specifically on that issue, but to talk about what can be done to reduce the harm to members, you know, the teaching faculty, the counselors, the librarians, and the coaches. I don't know where that is. But there is a history in the university of trying, are there ways to soften the blow if it's mutually agreed to, even if it's not contractual? And it had some positive impact, both for people in the FERP program, we had some people who took an additional year, and it also obviously kept people working.
I echo Andy's comments for the other non-facultary divisions, I believe it's the issue of engaging in those same kinds of conversations with the other collective working entities to follow up on the chancellor's mandate to save as many jobs as possible, something that I think in the first course would happen. Whether those conversations are on their way, I do not know. I would be persuaded that they would definitely, if they aren't already. Yes, sir?
I'll just, I'll just, is anyone able to identify the source of the pink sheet that is interesting, I realize there's one possible cause that it identified, it would be good to know where it came from or if it's possible biases.
I can answer that. It came from a faculty, a couple of faculty members who are in the, in the track process, and right now didn't feel comfortable coming forward, but they do, they are statistics experts, and they went to the list of salaries at the Sacramento V website for Sonoma State and the CSU to compare the salaries published through the state offices. So that's where they derived their statistics.
I would also add that my comments about them saying that they're, okay, come from the same, overwhelmingly the statistics I was quoting come overwhelmingly from the information provided by the California State University, and they were calculated by a research specialist with a PhD. They weren't made up, and we arrived at the same number, interestingly enough, this report, which was done independently of the report I've reported, arrived at virtually the same number within one or two in the number of MPPs at Sonoma State.
As long as we're adding information to, for you to evaluate, assess this sheet, I should point out something else, which is that in addition to those, against the Andy mentioned that are not in the general fund, there's also another source of bias or a systematic source of variation from the other campuses that needs to be taken into account, and that is that at Sonoma State, the auxiliary organization, the employees that work for the auxiliary organizations is in-sourced into the state's office. So that's another source variation that, you know, raises the number beyond what it would be at campuses that have relationships with their own employees. That might be what.
On this topic, I would just like to echo some of the comments that Susan's made. Sonoma State University is comprised of many people, dedicated faculty, staff, administrators, students, others. Each of those people make enormous and profound contributions to the second success of the quality of the institution. So whether they hold the title MPP or professor is entertaining to me, but I think everyone makes a serious contribution. But if there are opportunities that we can economize, we should take a serious look at them and try to do that in the most humane fashion. Any other comments? Since we're going to be not together in town halls until the eighteen, I suspect that there will be information that's going to come to the campus. And I would think it would be useful for this steering committee, to, the steering committee is willing, if we perceive that information, to put it out in some kind of fashion so that you can be aware of the things, these numbers, we're used to on this piece of paper, are going to change, we're going to be sure something is going to, they're going to deviate. Other, other things will come to pass, I'm sure. So I think the best way, Susan, would it be that you would send an alert somehow? I don't know if folks, professors are away, students are away, check if there's a issue of email.
Is it possible to have a link on our SSU webpage with updates and information? That way everybody could know where to go.
But I was wondering if you could somehow send something to alert someone that there's been an update, you might want to go look. And I don't, I guess what I'm urging folks to is watch your email if you are so inclined over the
over the summertime, or check into the SSU homepage periodically to see if there's anything new there. Because that is our way of communicating, but it's a substantial portion of the community has moved to other activities in the summer. It would be, I think this is one of those summers that might be good to check in very often, please, to see what's coming to pass.
Catherine?
Why did she?
The question is, are these budget cuts sustainable to the institution?
No. These are very, I don't think if they're, I agree with Eduardo, I don't think at the current level, if we had to take those reductions now, it would not be the same university that we have. There has to be some other adjustments that come to pass, either with revenue or enrollment or appropriation, something has to happen. This is too much, not only for Sonoma State University, but any of the CSU campuses. In fact, some of the really small campuses, the Maritime Academy, Baker Steal, Monterey Bay, Channel Islands, these almost wipe those schools off the mound. So they just don't have the capacity to survive.
Is that what you were saying?
I think, I'd like to speak for Chancellor Reed, I have not personally heard him say that, and I think it's, I've heard it come up in conversation, that everything's on the table.
What, what, we can't hear.
Catherine was saying, is that what Chancellor Reed was referring to when, I guess in his latest message, that the possibility of closing the campus was being considered? I have not seen that, but if that's what he said, I think, I think what they're saying is that everything is on the table.
I think you're referring to the paragraph where he gave some qualitative measures on the impact of these cuts, and one of them would be the closure of two campuses, two large campuses actually, and another one would be the reduction by fifty thousand students. So these are different ways of measuring. Now, is that?
No, you're right, you're right. He did mention, his things to discuss was that he did talk about campus closures, not as a measure, but as one thing, along with furlongs and lots of other things. It was? It was the first time he had ever said that, in the receipt of a public address, I think I did, you know, a lot of people thought it was a whole bluster. But if you think that these cuts are big enough, that some of the campuses just aren't going to make it, maybe that's what he was supporting.
Yeah, the magnitude, it will be very difficult for the California State University to continue its business the way it's conducted it with this type of pressure. I don't think it could be possible, something would have to change. I don't know what that is, I tend to think it's more on the revenue side and such, but this came in the early nineties, some of you were around, you remember this, most of this discussed, the possibility of closing the campus. It's a very substantial, very significant event. But, you know, I can't speak.
I had to get you a drink.
Okay, well, thank all of you so much for being willing to comment, not only today, but for all the town hallists that we have, not only on this topic, but the other topics. I want to extend my appreciation to Susan and Connor, who are the leaders of the town halls every year, and of course, to assist, support, and support the family. Now, the steering committee has been very, very helpful, and I suspect that we'll continue these discussions as the fall continues, as it comes on, because I don't think this budget situation will resolve itself quickly. So I hope that we'll continue the dialogue, and even though times are very difficult, this is a very celebratory weekend, that's about, honest, the main reason exists, many times, this graduation, so I hope that we all, despite the difficult times, celebrate a little bit, and recognizing the achievements of our students. With that, I'll just see you all soon.